Good evening and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this May 24th, 2022. I'm pleased that tonight we have Reverend Joe Evans with First Presbyterian Church of Marietta. He'll be providing our invocation, followed by the pledge, which will be brought by firefighter Christian Yance of Station 8B shift. Thank you both for being here tonight. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we bow our heads before you, giving you thanks for all those who bear the heavy mantle of leadership. Throughout the generations, you have called and equipped men and women to what on some days is a thankless task. Moses led the people out of slavery and through the desert, yet the people of Israel complained every step of the way, and he died before setting foot in the promised land. By his example, we see that leadership is not easy, and so I call on you to bless your servants here on the county commission as they seek to serve the people, often receiving more hate mail than thank you notes. May they seek the common good in a culture of division. May they plan for a brighter future. May they look forward to a new and better day. May they be renewed in strength. May they soar on wings like eagles. May they run and not grow weary. May they walk and not faint as they lead us, the citizens of Cobb County, to a brighter day. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. To our firefighter, thank you for the pledge. And Reverend, we're gonna bring you back. Thank you for being here. Our meeting is officially called to order. I am pleased that our first matter of this evening is to recognize the Cobb County Youth Commission graduates and would like to ask for those present with us this evening to please join me up front. Thank you. Thank you. And parents, this will be a good time to take those pictures you desired. You can feel free to actually come closer to our graduates. I'm grateful for them being here today and to have the opportunity to say thank you once again. We just had our ceremony right before this meeting where we honored them for their commitment to be a part of this inaugural program to not only learn about leadership, but to learn about what goes on in local government, which is an empowering experience. If you can think about the first time that you learned about your local government, you may have been like me and was a homeowner trying to figure out how to navigate some things. They're learning how to navigate the nuances of local government before they're even graduating from high school. And I'm just so proud of them, are proud of not only them sticking with us for this pandemic year, but for them instilling hope in me and our future leaders of our county. So thank you for everything that you do. Just know again, we're your partners, not just for this program, but for this program and beyond. So if you can help me in giving them a round of applause, please, for their participation. Again, we did the ceremony earlier, so we're gonna take an official Cobb County photo. And again, for parents, if you do want to actually come closer, this might be one of your only moments to grab that photo. I am less tall than some, so I will come to the front, and anybody who's a little bit less tall can join me up here, and then those more tall can be in the back. All right, come on, come on down, come on down, come on down. Yes, we'll stagger a little bit. All right. Here? Okay.
Yeah, you ease that. Okay, not bad. Here we go. Three, two, one. Good.
All right, and parents? All right, thank you, and you guys enjoy your summer. You're welcome. All righty, we'll give them a couple of minutes to clear out. All righty, next on tonight's agenda is for us to have a public hearing provided by Community Development. We'll hear from Director Gwen.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Gwen, Cobb County Community Development. This evening, we have a request for a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for property located at 3995 Winlinbrook Drive. They are proposing to construct a single-family residence, garage, pool, and cabana on a lot that's a little bit over nine acres currently undeveloped. Because the property is located within the Chattahoochee Corridor, it's required by the Metropolitan River Protection Act to be reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission for compliance with the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. It has been reviewed and has been determined to be in compliance with the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan, so this evening, we would ask that the Board of Commissioners conduct the required public hearing. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, with that being stated, for those who desire to participate in this public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to address the board regarding this matter and this matter only for three minutes. With that, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. All right, seeing no one here for this public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, and I understand we have to approve the application, so I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Richardson.
Sure. Just a motion to approve this item.
All right, very good. Second, that motion, is there any discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Just a reminder also to please silence or turn off your cell phones. The ringing interrupts the meeting and interferes with the broadcast itself. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just a reminder for those who might be speaking at the podium, there is a timer for the five-minute keeping track of it. We have one person, I think, who has left, Stanley Howard. Stanley Howard? He might have been. The other one is Matt Stegall, the other one's son is Matt Stegall.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Matt Stegall, and earlier today, I was honored to be a fly on the wall for a conversation about transit. And I'm also honored today to speak for public comment on Election Day, and I think that the big conversation was, is that we have an opportunity in a couple of years to put a referendum to the voters about expanding transportation or transit. And I really just wanted to, I know we have a lot more like hours of discussion facing us ahead of us, but I do want to reiterate that we did make a lot of progress, I think, today in that conversation, and I wanted to basically just reiterate three points that I think, you know, really I thought we could just hone in on. Number one is transit should be a priority, but not at the expense of other sustainable transportation options, and that includes sidewalks and bike infrastructure. You know, first, you know, you know, we need to be very cautious about expanding our road options, and there's two reasons for that. First is the concept of induced demand. I don't think that was really brought up much earlier today, where as we expand road capacity, more and more people then choose to drive. Back around 2010, we cut transit capacity, and since then, we've had a little bit of a decline of transit ridership, and I would love to see the option of us doing some induced demand when it comes to transit options, and then seeing if more riders then choose to ride. That would include, you know, increased coverage as well as increased frequency and the supporting infrastructure of the last mile, bus stops, and other infrastructure like that. And then the second one, and I believe Commissioner Gamble will mention this, a lot of our road capacity that we've spent millions upon millions of dollars to expand is actually being utilized by people outside of the county. Their throughput, a lot of that traffic isn't from people within the county, so we've invested in this capacity only for it to be utilized by more exurban areas, people like Cherokee, Paulding, Douglas, and Bartow. I think those are all of them. And so, yeah, so I think that if we were to continue to expand that road capacity, we would then, five, 10 years from now, we would see some, you know, the congestion would be back, but then also, it'd be more utilized by the exurban counties, which are actually expected to see even more growth than we are internally. So it's just, there's a lot of concerns when putting more money into those resources. Number two is, the best time to expand transit was years ago, decades ago. The second best time to do it is now. We've got a lot of federal, you know, federal incentives, a lot of grant money. There's a lot of great opportunities for us to really go into that now, and, you know, and let's, you know, to start increasing the staffing resources, I think it's going to be very important. There's no secret that I think the Cobb DOT worked miracles to get the CTP done, and I think we're in a position where we can help them with the upcoming budget to increase staff when it comes to planning resources and stuff like that. That way, you know, we have more resources in order to get some of this stuff done and be more competitive when it comes to the federal infrastructure laws. Also, we don't need to wait for the referendum to continue progress on the foundational elements, which include, you know, the maintenance facility expansion and the transfer facilities in Cumberland, South Cobb, and Marietta. I do think that those are foundational elements that if we were to expand in the future, the earlier those get done, the earlier we can actually expand servicing capacity. And number three, the point I think that really doesn't get mentioned a lot is transit benefits everyone, whether they use it or not. So I know Commissioner Sheffield mentioned that providing increased transit actually gives riders more access to education, jobs, recreational uses, stuff like that, but it also takes a car off the road, which then helps, you know, the, you know, car users and stuff like that as well, but also it makes our air cleaner, makes our environment better, and there's other benefits like that as well. So as we increase our investment in transit, you know, we see the benefits for the entire community like that. So to recap, you know, each of you are now in a position to move this county forward with a transformational regional transit solution that will provide more opportunities and access for generations to come, and I'm optimistic that we continue moving forward, and I look forward to working with each of you to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, there are no other public speakers.
Thank you, Bill. All right, we are now moving on then to our consent agenda. The items in our consent agenda, we're scrolling on the screen prior to today's meeting, and we'll scroll on the screen once the meeting is concluded. These items, we vote in bank, and it's my understanding with the items that we do have listed that there is a desire to at least pull one, if not more, so I'll turn to commissioners to see which items they would like pulled. Commissioner Burl.
I would like to ask that numbers seven and eight be pulled to, I mean, be moved to regular or either discussion before we vote on consent, and then number 12 is being pulled. Is it number 12? No, I'm sorry. Number 17, we would like to be pulled for a future meeting.
Okay, 17 is on the regular agenda, so let's address that when we get to, that's okay, when we get to the transportation tab, and we can pull items seven and eight, which are Senior Services, to the regular agenda, and is Dr. Gibson here?
Yes.
Right there, okay. So we typically will have the items pulled heard right after the consent agenda. So with that, commissioners, I ask that, excuse me, I'll make a motion for us to approve the consent agenda as revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thanks, commissioners. We'll now hear from Senior Services with respect to consent agenda items seven and eight.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Board, County Manager. We have two items, and we, they will be presented by our Division Manager for Senior Services. She's actually over the Human Services Unit for Transportation and for the Grants Unit, Iwana Bova Nikolescu.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we have two agenda items. The first one is to authorize the submission of a proposal, a grant proposal, from the Atlanta Regional Commission. This is to get ARPA rescue plan funding to provide supportive services for all the adults in Cobb County. This, this would be to supplement the services that we already provide. This application, the grant, would be for a one-year period with the option to renew for a second year.
Okay, thank you.
The second item...
We'll go ahead and hear, we'll hear the first one, and that's okay. We'll vote on that matter, and for the sake of moving this along, I move that we approve the agenda item as revised.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to clarify, because I know there was quite a few emails today. This is just a grant application, and that's, that is all that we are approving in this agenda item, is to allow our Senior Services to make the grant application. There is no commitment of funds by the county at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And that's, I think, was what we needed to...
My, my turn, please.
That, that was all we wanted to explain, that is just for the application, and if the grant is awarded to Cobb, it would come back to us for a vote to accept.
Yes, ma'am, we would do another agenda item at that time.
Correct. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
For clarity's sake as well, this grant, this bucket of funds, these are not the same as the county designated ARPA funds. This would be a grant submission to another agency that has separate ARPA fund dollars that are available for this purpose.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner.
And I'm gonna tag on to that one, because, because I know there's a lot of concerns about the ARPA funds, but with the funds going to this purpose, are there any other strings attached to other areas besides Senior Services in accepting these funds?
No, ma'am, these funds would go strictly to Senior Services, as I said, to supplement services we're already providing.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, commissioners? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item number eight.
Okay. This agenda item is to authorize Senior Services to purchase two 12-passenger buses to replace some of the older buses that we have that have reached their end of use, end use of life, and this funding already has been approved by the Board of Commissioners on the April 12th agenda, so this is what this item is about.
Thank you. I move that we approve the agenda item as revised.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
I know Commissioner Burl and I have been answering emails all day on this. Could you just give us a brief scenario of what these buses are used for?
So these buses are mainly used to transport older adults to medical appointments, to critical appointments like dialysis, cancer treatments, shopping, so they're mainly used to provide what we call demand response transportation, and we've seen really actually an increase in requests for transportation services.
That answer your question? Okay. Commissioner Burl.
And the, this is to replace the buses that are already in the system that have used their, their time is due to be replaced.
We do have several that have a lot of miles and a lot of years on them, so this, these two would be to replace some of those.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Sheffield.
And what's the average lifespan on these vehicles?
We usually say 10 years or 100,000 miles.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Richardson.
And just a question on inventory, because of course, this is something we're hearing across the board, but being able to obtain access to some of these, I believe that's also why the revision was from three to two?
Yes, we initially requested permission for three. Unfortunately, buses are just not available these days, and we've had a hard time even finding them, so we were lucky enough to be able to, to secure two and put them on hold, so hopefully this will allow us to go ahead and get those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, commissioners? All right, I'll call the questions. The motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
We will now move to our regular DOT tab, and we will hear from our Director Drew Russler. As he's coming up again, there was a desire to go ahead and pull agenda item number 17, and this is coming from the District Commissioner, and this shouldn't impair anything moving forward?
That's correct. We discussed earlier today, and, and we're comfortable with project timelines if this item is pulled.
Very good. So we'll go ahead and pull agenda item number 17 and go to agenda item number 18.
And then, forgive me, for the add-on item, is, is that after, after we finish the...
Yes, it's after, it's after agenda item number 20, but for sake of ease, why don't we go ahead and move to add the non-agenda transportation item to the regular agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, and item number 17 being held for a future meeting, DOT has four items for presentation tonight. Our first item, item number 18, is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Accelerate Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $259,800 for Bell's Ferry Road Sidewalk, project number X2748. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very excited to see this gap filled in and this project moving forward finally. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, it's a great project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $737,626.35 for Jim Owens Road, Lewis Elementary School, project number X2801. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners to approve an agreement for preliminary engineering services with Norfolk Southern Railway Company in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for preliminary engineering of Old Floyd Road at Veterans Memorial Highway, project number X2329. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And our final item, the add-on item, just by way of context, on May 25th, almost exactly a year ago today, tomorrow, the Board authorized procurement of 22 vehicles from Creative Bus Sales to, to replace end-of-life vehicles in our paratransit fleet, a paratransit fleet of about 30, so a significant replacement. Unfortunately, with the supply chain challenges that we are all experiencing these days, those buses are still another 12 to 18 months away in, in terms of delivery, and we are down to only five of our 30 buses being, being operational. The, the proposal tonight, the, these vehicles would be available immediately to supplement the, the paratransit fleet and to, to be able to restore all of the operations, paratransit and flex that utilize that, that fleet. So with that background, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Transit System Award Agreement with First Transit Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $686,613 for the provision of 14 vehicles required to support the delivery of CobbLink paratransit and flex services effective June 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now moving to our Support Services tab, and we'll hear by our Director Sharon Stanley.
Good evening, madam, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. The item I'm bringing tonight is a drawn item with Cobb County Fire. I'm excited to bring this one forward, it's been a long time coming. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an agreement with Cumberland Mall LLC for the acquisition of vacant land located at Cumberland Mall in Cobb County, Georgia, and generally identified in Exhibit A comprised of approximately .92 acres for consideration in the amount of $1,282,406 for the Fire Station 29 location, a 2016 Sloss Project X1023. Approve the terms and conditions set forth in the attached agreement for purchase and sale. Authorize payment of associated land acquisition cost. Authorize closing of the purchase of the property substantially as provided in these agreements. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute all necessary documents and take all other action necessary or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing purposes.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'm so excited, too. The unicorn is no longer a unicorn, but only in its legacy, so this is fantastic, and I know a long time coming, so great work on staff's behalf for this. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, Commissioner.
I would just like to say, I hope Commissioner Odd is watching.
Any other questions or comments? Make sure I... Make sure I check everyone out. Commissioner Richardson?
On that note, let's make sure he gets a unicorn hat, too.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to the Medical Examiner tab, and hear by our Director, Dr. Golic.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're just bringing one item. The Board we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize the transfer of our accreditation coordinator position that has been previously funded by a grant from the National Institute of Justice within the grant fund to the Medical Examiner's General Fund Budget effective July 1, 2022, through September 30, 2022, to authorize the transfer personnel associated with the grant fund unit to the general fund unit. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Believe that brings us to our second public comment.
And we have no person signed up for public comment.
All right. This is a record. Moving on then to the Commissioner's Public Address. And we will begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. And while the slides are queuing up, thank you to all those who volunteered today to serve at our polls and be election watchers and poll workers and all that you did to help set up and run our elections. Thank you. And with that, it is this time of year to acknowledge to our staff, all of our students that are graduating. So congratulations to our staff and their families who are celebrating at the end of this year with their students graduating. So here are some photos. Anybody who's graduating, preschool, we got them all. And we even include our latest mandate class.
Wow.
And again, Happy Memorial Day. Thank you to all those that have served and allow us to be who we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, one last thing. Also, a great thank you to our Park staff. We had a great event on Saturday at Price Park. And the Parks Director and I had a little bet of who was going to touch the snake, and we did it together. So it was fun by all. The kids had a great time. And thank you to our Park staff for a great event.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Well, I hear from Commissioner Richardson.
All right, from the office. Yes, we had our quarterly report town hall with guests from across the district to just share some of the updates. And staff did a fantastic job giving their highlights, key things to be to be proud of over the last quarter. And we gave out some pretty fantastic community awards. So if you want to watch a recap, it's it's out there on YouTube, on Facebook, on Instagram. Well, you probably can find the link on Instagram. But it was a really good time, really great engagement. And these are always just, they're awesome events for me, because it just it's that that real touch and reveal on what's going on and an opportunity to share just the incredible amount of work that this county undertakes. Thursday, we've got our next seat meeting, Sustainability Environmental Advocacy Project, where we have all of our guest speakers that come in and just share insight about different projects, and we look for ways in which we can collaborate, plug in, see if there's any inspiration that comes from those conversations. So this coming up one, join me and my sustainability chair, Arjo Turner, for this year's, I mean, for this Thursday Stakeholders Meeting with Dr. Chris Manganello from Chattahoochee Riverkeeper. We are finalizing the Stakeholders Meeting series, and we'll be moving on to the next phase of the seat project. So make sure you're involved. Community updates. Looking for something fun to do for free? You can visit local attractions at no cost or at a reduced rate with a Parker Museum Pass. Visit cogcat.org backslash outdoor dash adventures to learn more about Cobb's relationships with the Bremen Museum, Carlos Museum, Center for Puppetry Arts, Chattahoochee Nature Center, Georgia Aquarium, Georgia State Parks and Historic Sites, Macon Area Museum, Southern Museum, and Zoo Atlanta. That's my last slide, but I definitely want to echo kudos to the election staff. It's past 7 o'clock, so lots of hard work, and my goodness, lots of hard work. And certainly find time to reflect and remember on Memorial Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, I too would like to thank all the election staff and poll workers and watchers and monitors and volunteers and also the voters today in early voting. So congratulations to the Pope Greyhounds. Pope swept ala tuna to claim the Class 6A state championship Thursday at Truist Park. The Greyhounds won 10 to nothing in six innings and then added a 9 to 2 win in the nightcap to claim the fifth state title in program history. It was the team's first championship since 2018 and the first under Coach Chris Turco, who took over from mentor Jeff Rowland before the season, following 18 years as an assistant coach. Congratulations to all the members of the Greyhounds on bringing home a championship title. And also, county offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th, in observance of Memorial Day. And remind everyone that this is a day to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice and remember all the veterans that have gone before us. And I'd like to show a quick video of the Cobb Veterans Memorial. Hello, everyone. I'm Joanne Burrow, your District 3 Cobb County Commissioner, and I'm honored to be here today with the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation Board. We have an exciting project that we're partnering with Cobb County and the Veterans Memorial Group here today. And we are so excited to tell you about this project. It is going to be located on county property. It will be a county park for future generations to enjoy and honor all of our veterans across the state of Georgia. Please join us in welcoming the Cobb Memorial Foundation Board. And please watch the video and learn how you can be involved.
I always wanted to do something for my country, for the United States. And in 1942, I found myself in the South Pacific.
I've always been proud to serve my country. And to be a veteran, I don't know whether I would be the same individual today I would have been without being a veteran.
I don't remember the flag much, other than in school, you know, the Pledge of Allegiance when I was growing up. But when I was eight years old and I went to my dad's funeral, the flag took on a whole new meaning. How can we not teach our children about the sacrifice in our country?
You know, you don't want to forget, no matter what, good, bad, whatever, you don't want to forget.
Cobb County wants to recognize those people that served this county, this state, and this nation. And I think it's important for those veterans to see that appreciation in a monument style.
We need to say thank you. We need to say thank you to veterans and their families. We want this memorial to mean that to every veteran.
Democracy is not free. It comes with a price. And we need to be thankful and let people know, not only in the past that we thank them for their service or the present, but also future generations to come.
I think this way veterans don't think that they're forgotten. They see a memorial and they know what I've done has changed something or done something and is bigger than themselves.
Hi, I'm Donna Rowe. I'm the President of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation. I want to tell you about this wonderful foundation and what we're about to do. We're going to have a wonderful memorial here in Cobb County, right next to the Cobb Civic Center. This board is here to raise the money, along with funds from Cobb County, to make this the best Cobb Veterans Memorial and the best veterans memorial in the state of Georgia. We hope you join us. You can go to our website, cobveteranmemorial.com, and get more information, and you can get our phone numbers on that site. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you and having a celebration at the next Memorial Day.
We're very excited to build this memorial, to thank and honor our veterans and the families of those who served, and also to inspire the next generation to lives of service and to unify our great state, our great county, and the United States. We hope you learn more about the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation at cobveteranmemorial.com. The memorial is going to be built to thank and honor our veterans and their families for their service to our nation, and also to inspire the next generation to lives of service. We hope you'll join us.
God bless America!
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Our monthly in-the-zone meeting will be held tomorrow, May 25th, at 7:00 p.m. Our monthly community meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in District 4. We have two new cases for June and several continued cases to discuss, so be sure to join our call and email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Hope to see you there. Celebrate Older Americans Month and Senior Services 50th Anniversary with ice cream and fun. Join in the fun at Freeman Pool Senior Center on May 27th from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. The center is located at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. And here's the best part, the cost for the event is 50 cents. For additional information, contact 770-801-3400. Join me and Industry Professionals of ABBA Financial Associates and Southeast Mortgage as we co-host a Home Buyer Financial Workshop. The workshop sessions will provide information regarding budgeting, the best strategies to increase credit scores, down payment assistance, and much more. The financial workshop is a precursor to our annual Path to Home Ownership Summit in late summer. The event will take place on Saturday, June 4th, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Police Training Center located at 2435 East West Connector in Ostell. Lunch will be provided, and we will also raffle gas cards. To attend, RSVP to didra.watts@cobbcounty.org. And finally, just thank you to all who have served democracy today. Your public service is appreciated. And thank you to those who have served this country as we acknowledge your sacrifice on Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you to all who've served our country. We appreciate your sacrifice every day. We hope that our citizens have honored that sacrifice by going out and voting today. And certainly want to take time to thank all of those in elections, particularly our Director, Janine Evler. And I want to make sure that I take time to recognize the service of our fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Joanne Burrow, who has a pretty significant night tonight. I want to thank you for your continued avid service to this county, even today. We know that you could have been out there, and we've had some business of the county to handle, and you showed up here today to help move the business of the county forward. And I want to thank you for that and honor you for that as you go throughout this evening. With that, thank you, everyone, for tuning in, and hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.